And I know over the last few years we've done this differently.
It gets better.
Uh, I thought this time we would, if if this was pleasing to the board, to use the exhibit presented by ASBA, uh, go through each of these, uh, see if we have consensus on how we rank, um, obviously, like talk about any of these we feel strongly about and then from that, at the end of this, there's an opportunity to to make statements or set goals. Okay, uh, so the first category is board relationship with the superintendent. Uh, the first item is, and the the scores to me like it's disappointing, there's no excellent, we can always add another category for excellent, um, but there's satisfactory, needs improvement, or, uh, unsatisfactory. I think we can add a fourth one if we think we're doing excellently. Um, the board imparts information on issues, needs, and complaints in a manner following the superintendent, the opportunity to resolve related problems in a professional manner.
I think it's satisfactory.
Is it?
Can we have complaints? Are you like?
No, I don't have.
From time to time.
So then it would be not applicable, there's no complaints.
Oh, you mean complaints within the, well.
Is it when you guys receive complaints about the system?
Well, I just, yeah, I don't think it's like.
I get, when I have individual individual board meetings, if there's something that one of the board members has heard out in the community, whether it's a patron or a friend or something maybe from the teacher or, um, that. Or extraordinary member, you know, uh, uh, most, I mean, I always.
Oh, but that part didn't live.
They, I mean, I'm aware and I could be to maybe get more information or or make a phone call or whatever.
Yeah. I think that was really a good question.
Okay, cool. Uh, the board clearly interprets its position on controversial matters pertaining to the district, uh, thereby enabling the superintendent to properly carry out the wishes of the board.
Well, they always ask for clarification if they need it, it seems, so.
Yeah, I mean, do we as a board, I think maybe like act united, I I think like in the last year, like, I don't even remember when we renamed the school, that's probably the most controversial.
Oh, yeah, that, uh, yeah.
Sometimes.
So I got tired of it, I remember that for a couple of years.
Yeah.
That was for the last year. I remember that a ton of times.
Yeah, but so as a board, working with the super, because the category is with our relationship with superintendent, uh, the board clearly interprets or interpreted its position. I don't know that we did, I think that we had different interpretations, I mean, ultimately, we had called him legal for advice, um.
But that's a smart thing to do.
But I think we gave clear directions to the superintendent on what we needed. Satisfactory. Uh, the board disregards personalities and considers the recommendations of the superintendent in an unbiased and objective manner.
Well, sometimes. Well, we're being honest, it's sometimes.
Okay, so do you think we need improvement, or do you think we're okay?
Well, I think we're okay, because if we always agreed on everything, it would be like boring, boring for one thing, but it it's more productive when you do have more lively discussions, I guess, and it helps everybody learn more. So I don't think it needs improvement, that we just have to realize that our personalities sometimes come in.
Yeah, I don't I don't think our super, our personalities ever interfere with us.
No, no, they don't.
I think that, and we'll see if this is in here, but I think that even when we've disagreed, like, we've just supported whatever the board has decided and.
And so.
And I feel the board's empowered Dr. Boyle to, to do whatever she's asked of you. Okay, the, uh, the board communicates views of personal effectiveness, sorry, personnel effectiveness, including views related to the superintendent in a confidential and professional manner. Yeah, satisfactory. All right, board relationship with the community. Uh, the board recognizes that the citizens have entrusted them with the educational development of the children and youth of this community. I think that we probably are exemplary in that.
I agree.
Okay, the board recognizes that the community expects their first and greatest concern to be of the, in the best interest of each and every one of the young people without distinction as to who they are or what their background may be. Yeah, I I think that we're exemplary in that. Uh, the board enacts policies supporting efforts of the administration and helping the people of this community to have the facts about their schools, to the end that they will readily provide the finest possible school program, school staff, and school facilities.
Yeah.
And try.
Yeah. Yeah.
The matter, for example, being, Len, uh, Len Viner was talking about in like when we're doing budget, we we schedule, you know, times evening and for providing community, I know mostly they don't, but we, you know, we advertise it in the communicator, but also that whole parent piece that that we really work hard to get parents there to provide information and.
Yeah, and and I think that we're willing to partner with IWS and others to share, uh, what we're doing.
We had a budget meeting, so that was a full house.
Yeah.
We had a couple of, they weren't community council, they were extra budget.
Well, the parent ones are a full house, there's usually a hundred, but when we, we also did like three different community meetings that were advertised, one was at Fillmore Prep, one was at Gateway, one was, and it was like, there were like six of us there and like one poor person and we were all.
And they got really tired of us.
Right. It's hard to get the community to come up with a budget.
Yeah, honestly, we're satisfactory.
Yeah.
Okay, our next category is board relationships between members during meetings. Individual members of the board treat other members of the board and professional staff with respect during board meetings.
It's got to be.
Okay.
No one's spitting at each other yet.
We have a what? We have a what?
No one's spitting at each other.
Yeah. Have a heavy fight.
We have, we have those, yeah. Repeat the term.
Differences of opinion influencing board member votes are based on the issues at hand and not on a personality basis.
Satisfactory.
Yeah. All members of the board conduct themselves in such a manner as to emphasize that individual board members have authority only when convened in a legally conducted board meeting with at least a quorum present.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Satisfactory. All right, board relationships with staff and personnel. The board requires the superintendent to recommend personnel to their consideration and consistently adheres to this procedure.
Satisfactory. Not more.
Yeah, I mean, what would the alternative be, say like Dr. Boyle, you need to hire this person?
It's been done nepotism, not not here, but others, other districts here.
Okay, well, I've never done that.
No, not here.
Other districts here. Nepotism and favoritism can come in play, I'm not saying if we ever have, it has happened here, it's just other places it has.
Okay, uh, the board members make every effort to become acquainted with the personnel of this district.
Yes.
Okay.
Like we were talking last week when I walked into CSHR, Jim were talking to Lori and Scott on the phone, and then I kind of got in a conversation, but not a lot, and he said, how many districts do you know that, we're talking to two APs, two cabinet members, we're talking to two APs and a board member walks in and knows everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody knows everybody, so that's a good thing.
The board members' personal friendships with district personnel are maintained without allowing them to affect overall board decisions and or policies.
Yeah.
I think absolutely. Board relationship to the instructional program. The board makes an effort to keep informed about the instructional program by providing four periodic reports as needed necessary and by periodic visitation in the schools.
I'm not as good as I was.
Yeah.
I don't believe that.
But we also have like the periodic, I mean, we have, I would say like our board meetings are focused on the program and how is that, so.
Yeah. Sometimes to me it's easier to focus on, it's good for everybody and and putting faces to the program sometimes because you have to be like, especially the budget, you have to be really objective instead of subjective, so it's easier. But then when I see the kids, I'm like, really, I mean, now I got to go see the kids, so.
Yeah. I mean, do we think as a board we should prioritize more time, going to schools, I haven't been for a while personally, I know it was really helpful.
I'd like to myself, but it's it's can be difficult.
Especially when you have to work for a living.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We all work more.
Truly, I mean, we did go to to schools, not as much as we used to with board meetings and in different schools, but we did at certain schools at various times, usually near this, uh, early summer, springtime, and have board meetings at different schools, but it's kind of hard when you have to lead yourself, so.
Yeah, of course.
Well, and then the other issue is that there have been staff, the IMC, who are no longer there, so it's harder to set up the whole thing at other sides because it it's it's overtime and so.
So then. It's double.
It's still.
Yeah.
So it's not that every board member would need to go to schools or, but it's so on this one particular, do you think that we're satisfactory or needs improvement?
I think we do a lot better job than a lot of school districts and other board members that I talk to.
I do, I'm not understanding why.
I guess I'm also thinking of us as more as like not comparing ourselves to other schools, so I don't, I don't think that's a good, or. But.
I think we need to set a high bar.
I I, I think that, uh, I think we do satisfactory in this area. I I don't, I don't say we are excellent, but I I think we're pretty good.
I think the board is really informed and the board is informed, correct for information and and the people who are employees have that information, willing and available to come to board meetings, so the the board meetings themselves really providing for, but you have to, obviously, we're, it's, I'm excited, unenoblishing.
Okay, uh, the board attempts to gain information from the community pertaining to instructional program needs. I I know that we've engaged the community specifically on budget as it relates to the program. Um, I don't know, I don't know if we've done more than that.
Because the budget has to be aligned to the instructional programs, I don't know. That is one of the reasons that we pull parents in to talk about what we should preserve as an instructional program. And we always, for example, as one example, the whole issue for their community, but. The community is really, and they have the opportunity to voice that.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, the board maintains policies necessary to enable the educational staff to develop the educational program required to meet the needs of the community.
Sure, we do, we do strongly.
Yeah, I think. Cool, I think that we're exemplary, I feel like for all the challenges we've been presented, um, we've definitely monitored our policies, enforced them, revised them as necessary.
Well, so the S is superior, or the S is.
Yeah, really.
Not, that's what Mabel said.
Okay, board relationships.
To the financial.
Yeah, board relationship to the financial management of schools. Uh, number one, this, the board establishes the policies and provides the necessary resources to properly manage the finances of the district. Satisfactory.
Yeah.
The board requires the proper accountability for the expenditure of funds in the district.
Yeah.
But we know all about it.
The Goldwater might have a, some.
Yeah, different opinion.
Um, the board, I thought it's satisfactory. Uh, the board provides justified funding to maintain a high quality educational program in this district. Yeah. What do you think about the board?
Absolutely.
Uh, the board keeps the community informed about the financial needs of the district.
Yeah.
Abs, yes. Okay, uh, list in the order priority the four major problems of the board.
Like the root problem.
I think that overall we're, I don't know that we have some, I.
Support faces, so it's, it it could be something that is out of our control, as in the funding, you know, or lack of funding.
Yeah.
Most of the problem.
Capital, I mean.
We have no control, but it's a problem we face and it is a, a challenge.
Yeah.
So.
Capital for capital.
Yeah, capital.
Capital funds, yeah, um, MNO funds.
Reductive MNO is the things to pay raises, those types of things.
Yeah, I mean, so like, I don't know, uh, I I have a capital fund, I I definitely agree, I know that we've managed our reductions, I think, very well, um, but as a, as a consequence, we have not been able to give raises, so I don't know if that's necessarily a funding thing, I think that there are other things we could do as a district to address some of those that I believe we've done well. Um, I definitely, like, we've heard, like, we've had communication challenges, um, and I don't know that we have great morale. So I would say that's a, a, a problem we maybe face versus money, that's my opinion. So I would list that as employee morale.
Now, as a politician, I don't need the problem. The politics.
Stakeout, the politics of the.
Well, the difference, we're always wondering how they're gonna handle the budget. Like even in, what, in speech anxiety.
Yeah.
Was a big hit for, you know, central community school districts.
Right.
It's just the politics is something that we have to deal with.
I mean, I think it's just the changing landscape of education and capability, like, that's more, I mean, yes, there, the, the, yeah, thing is.
Everything changes, all the the core standards, the this standard, the that standard, the A's test versus the P's versus whatever.
Right.
And I think that maintaining the, a positive public perception of Creighton is continuing to be a challenge with the changes of the landscape, so that's why I really appreciated the Common Core presentation today to see how are we talking, at least, at the very least, to the parents of our community about that, so that they're, they understand how the changes are gonna affect the student all the way up to the school. School district.
So you would say like, how would you, how would we capture that, like, as a?
I think just your broad comments about change of the education landscape of the category, whatever you said it, it is part of that.
Yeah, okay, so I have capital funds, um, the changing the education landscape, that's really the accountability. Um, our political challenges such as immigration, and I guess we can throw in their, like, education funding. There's three, those are important ones.
You know, you talked about the morale, maybe a way to encapsulate that because it comes off of the new staff retention.
Yeah.
You're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay.
That engages in everything, it forms the morale.
Yeah.
Period, everything gets encapsulated.
All right, list any weaknesses you have observed in the operation of the school system. I mean, maybe just the continuity of classroom leadership, I don't know what you call it, like, when we have teachers leave frequently, that's to me the problem, that's the breakdown in the system. Yeah.
Yeah, but you also, you're going to have that in any job or any employment, especially, you know, you have to take into consideration a certain percentage of teachers are going to decide, this is not for me after one or two years. We do have at every end of, uh, the school year, teachers who have been here, many of them, twenty, thirty years, we have a lot that have been here, and that's so I wouldn't say teacher retention percent, you have to expect some leaving, a percentage.
All right.
We do have a lot that have been here forever and a day, as in, this true. And you, you have.
Yeah, well, I, I, I mean, I don't even look at it as our administration having that challenge, I I look at it more in in my conversations with principals, like, they're working very hard to build something and they have to start over with new staff, uh, and that, that some, some turnover is good, some is expected, but it's not all of it is good, and I feel like it's a common theme amongst many campuses that we have, that we're losing too many, not necessarily, yes, we expect some, but like more than we need to.
I'd like, I'd like to, you know, compare us to a, a, a school district about the same size and see if we're above, or, you know, even three or four of them, see if we're above teacher retention, below teacher retention, or right in the middle, I, you know what I mean?
I don't like to give out those numbers.
They don't like to.
Yeah, it's like, I feel it goes in.
They don't like to tell you who leads, how many leads out here.
To be honest, it's not so much with how we compare, it's what we require of our teachers and the amount of professional development it takes to get them to a fairly high level, um, we replaced a lot of teachers last year and this year, and, um, the challenge we face in terms of the system is getting those teachers to up to, up to standard in terms of what we've had expectations for the last four years for teachers, and a lot of times, there's just not enough resource and time to accelerate that process as fast as you need to do it.
Right.
And I think that therein lies the challenge that we finish with teacher retention.
Do you think our teachers are being kind of like, um, um, what would you call it? Do you think people are looking, or other districts are looking at our teachers to take them away because of they last year, uh, Wested, the abilities of Ritter and all that other good stuff, and the high standards that have been taught to our teachers, and you know, the test scores going up and the way our teachers have kind of just shifted that they're better teachers than someone else?
I don't think people are, no, I don't, but what I do think is when a teacher shows up and is looking for a job that's closer to their home, or they're looking for a job because, uh, they moved out of state, or when they're uh, looking for a job just because they are maybe unhappy with what they're currently doing, I think all of that is evident in the interview process, and people, I don't think they're necessarily coming to our, you know, targeting, but when they, when they, when they talk to our people, when they talk to the staff here, and they, they see what they know, they, they can do, I think that's, that really helps people get jobs of the license.
For sure, yeah, I I I've talked to principals and they are very excited to get Creighton folks because of the training, and I've talked to a number of folks who have chosen to leave their districts to come to Creighton for the same reasons. I think that we're losing more than we're bringing in, though.
That's true.
So.
Yeah, and I would agree too, I don't think that other districts approach our teachers, but that, again, when they apply, they have such good credentials and, and, uh, and certainly if they are moving, wanting to move closer to home, and they ask us for a letter of recommendation, and make them a stellar, uh, teacher or assistant principal, whatever, we will certainly support them as we can, just in all fairness. Uh, but I I'm going to just say that the conversation of teacher retention and and positive climate has been a conversation we've been really having recently with HR and and cabinet, and, and, you know, we're looking, you know, what can we do as a district administration to provide, uh, a message to the teaching staff, whether they come in this year or they've been here for a while, that we really, uh, value what they are doing, and, and so, and we've been talking about everything, including allowing them to have a new refrigerator in their classroom because when they're here late at night or late in the day and they, they're gonna continue working and they'd like something cold to drink or whatever, so I mean, I I know that sounds trivial, but, but.
Well, so.
Didn't we pull those out, like?
Because of certain reasons.
Yeah, we did, but is that, I, I mean, we're, we're just having.
Sometimes you wonder if you're, you know, one of.
Cause there are, there's somebody complaining about their insulin. Yeah, that's exactly, so what we're doing is reflecting back on decisions and saying, is this in the best of the situation? And, and supporting them and showing value, because we can't show value with rates right now.
Yeah. Well, so I had the opportunity, I had a conversation with Tim Daly last week from New Teacher Project, they put out a new study called Irreplacables on teacher retention, um, and they provide their own research on, they don't think that the the problem with retention is more like we're losing the wrong folks out of education systems, uh, and there are some recommendations, I don't know how that that pertains to our district, but maybe something that we should, uh, take a look at.
Yeah.
Uh, and what I, what I found striking in that was the, the irreplacables, as they call them, are like the top twenty percent of the teachers, um, that it's, they say it takes like eleven new hires to replace this one person, uh, and then on top of it, um, a lot of these irreplacables are leaving because they're not getting that positive reinforcement from the principal, and the principal isn't cultivating them to stay, and there's a lot more attention on the non-replacables, or whatever they call them as, you know, you need them for this, or, I, they just kind of like get, the, I think, yeah, I think leadership just kind of neglects them and like they're doing the things, and, but then they feel not wanted.
It's definitely negative attention rather than giving positive.
Or just not, they're not getting it.
Any attention, I think, really. Right.
We're getting off topic and we're not homeschoolers.
Okay.
Okay, so nevertheless.
We're talking about a weakness?
Yeah, as a weakness in our school system, and we can, I don't know how we want to categorize it, I think that the topic is teacher turnover, teacher retention, um, and then we'll do the last one here, which is, what are any significant accomplishments made by the school district, by the school system last year, in the past year?
Built a school.
Building school, growth and achievement.
Very constructive when they do the budget cuts, and they, they. Right.
We balanced our budget.
They do, they do a great job, yep. They're looking at the budget, starting with a hundred a year. That's good. Biggest thing they do.
I think academic, our teacher teams have, is moving on to a new level.
Yeah, so these are the things I've captured here, uh, we opened a brand new school, uh, I think we balanced the budget, which is not, that is significant. Uh, and, and, I mean, overall, our overall achievement dropped two points out of two hundred, that's not a lot as far as I'm concerned, so I think that that's significant, and then I, I'm putting specifically like Fillmore Prep, Melinda, ADTT are like key areas of growth.
So I, I, I think that we have the, are going into the fifty year partnership with Wes and. Yeah, I mean, you know, Wested has done a massive amount to help us, and, uh,
Intervening at course.
Sometimes we forget it, I mean, the students, you know, their scores go up, but why do their scores go up? Yes, our teachers are sought after if they apply to another job, but why? It's Wested, everything kind of.
Adults.
Yeah, it's, they're our foundation right now on a lot of things that is good about the school district.
And what about the kids rock programs that keep growing every year?
Uh, each rock is, uh, was lost its plenty, and so if they're doing it in a different way, they're not doing the, um, big thing in January, but they're doing mini marathons, but as far as communities, children's hospital, they are supporting the district, and it is.
Oh, yeah.
Our partnerships just.
Yeah, partnerships. Well, what about making the groups to school safe, didn't we, then it wasn't the city involved?
Yes.
Was that this year?
Yes, I mean, this, last year.
And analyzing, you know, making the block in school less successful and our community be safe, I think that was a caution.
Right.
Well, do we know that, I think, so maybe it's a caution, is that a significant accomplishment, like, how significant was that?
Because we got rid of graffiti, we made areas more, more safe to walk, got parents involved, more people walking and exercising. We turned what could have been a negative into a positive.
And my students stayed, our, our, well, our two, the back students, they stayed and.
They didn't take up the charter school. Okay. Just, I, I think in, uh, in, in terms of Billmore Prep.
Right.
You know, that school was down to just over two hundred students and people were whispering about closing, closing schools and that type of thing. And, um, I talked with, um, I talked with Faith on Friday and she said, I think we're gonna be over four hundred.
Excellent.
So that's, that's a growth behind the kids just in.
Yeah. And we're pulling off all those Madison families.
And I'm just saying that we actually, um, are going to, last year we got some students just below Lincoln. And this year we're actually gonna get a couple of students above Lincoln.
Oh, wow.
So the word is getting out and the fact that you stayed the course.
I think that was.
That's schools, that's a significant, you know, there, there was some, there was a lot of whispering going on. You stayed the course and that school is growing.
And I would, I just noticed we got some students paid from the parent who, and I won't identify the parent, but the parent says, I saw the, I just saw the news of Billmore Prep got an A for a second year in a row. I'm so proud of our school and of all the hard work by you and our amazing teachers. I, notably, I saw that our scores surpassed those of all the other schools in our area. And then the schools remained, uh, and their scores. And so, um, Billmore Prep did, um.
Yeah.
Great.
MTA. Awesome. Any, uh, final comments on our evaluation? I, so I just wanted to emphasize, I know that, uh, I definitely bring a lot of opinions, uh, strong opinions on policy decisions. Uh, and I feel like we've, I've, we've been able to have that conversation uh, and whatever the decision, just the board has always decided to like one hundred percent support. Like, this is what the board decided. And I think that's remarkable. That doesn't happen all the time. Uh, it doesn't even happen often. So I think for tho, for, for that type of situation to exist is a very positive thing. And the board, I think, has been very open to hearing any sort of feedback from the community, from teachers, from administrators. I think we've been very open, so it's been a second positive. And I don't know really was captured here very well. Cool. With that, let's move on, uh, to future agenda items. Conference attendance is the, the first thing listed here. Is that, uh, in reference to the legal conference?
Um, it's more towards like N S D A because that has to have more approval. So, um, obviously we, we'll not be a fourth number like Tiffany and Donna and Robin if they're elected.
And Matt would want to.
Matt, Matt.
He goes every other year.
I'm not up for reelection.
No, but if you would want to attend N S D A.
They're gonna go next year.
I thought it was in San Francisco.
No, San Diego and New Orleans.
And, uh, Donna, if you guys are elected.
Huh?
If you are elected, would you like?
I would like to go, yes. I.
I'll think about it. Sorry.
That's fine because I still need to ask Matt.
Okay.
Is anybody else planning on going to law conference? Has anybody else won the law conference?
No.
September. Are you? And that would be in your board voting.
Can I mention a couple calendars?
Yes.
Uh, just to remind you that on Tuesday at six P M is an executive session regarding legal uh, in, uh, in our law conference. And then the following Wednesday, um, August fifteenth is our district convocation and the Creighton School Gym. Social begins at two, recognition begins at two thirty and it's completed by four. And this is, um, an event with the governing board, as you all want to, you've been there. And it's, um, the governing board plays a, um, major role in convocation. So just to remind you of that.
Fifteen.
Uh, fifteen, on a Wednesday.
I'll save that for a couple hours.
Okay.
I would frame it an hour because it starts at two thirty, yeah.
Eighteen states.
And just, uh, I, I, this you don't have to write down because it doesn't apply to you being somewhere, but just from the information, as I'm looking at this calendar, the information that you've heard today on some of the, you know, initiatives in our district, uh, we're going to be doing the C T forest sweeps, the third week in August. And it will be, um, organized, it is, has been organized by, um, gym's office and, um, the, um, principals, assistant principals and supervisors, et cetera, are going to be part of those sweeps. Again, that's gathering baseline data. And then the, we already shared map pathways and pitfalls. The following, last week of August, there's, there's training for those people who are gonna be trained with the train. So I'm just giving you a flavor on the, um, curriculum and.
Just letting the board know I'll be, um, out August the twenty first and September fourth.
Where are you going?
August twenty first, I'll be participating in the leadership fellowship in Aspen, Colorado. And September fourth, taking vacation. Um, future agenda items, anyone?
Was the human growth and, um, development curriculum for you? Are they ready to, are we ready to put it on the agenda yet or are they still wrapping things up?
We're still wrapping things up. I mean, that curriculum that they presented, um, first of all, we're in transition from Michelle to Sylvia. So that's gotta take place and they have a meeting set up. Uh, really, the, the curriculum is in place. I mean, it's available. Um, it's a matter of, um, two things. Uh, we think we're good, but if you remember, I can't remember the law, the number on the legislation. Um, but there was a whole deal where they were trying to, where they were pulling money from Planned Parenthood. And there's some language in there that made us question whether or not we could use Planned Parenthood to come in and do the training on this, on the curriculum because they do that. Uh, we think we're okay. Um, so that's almost cleared up. And then, uh, we just have to then coordinate with Planned Parenthood uh, and the principals in terms of training of staff and how we're going. Because every school may deliver that human growth and development curriculum differently. Uh, some, the individual classroom teachers will do it. In other cases, they have a team of teachers who want to do it and then go from class to class. So determining who needs to be trained and then engaging, um, uh, Planned Parenthood in the process of doing that training.
So. Yeah, I think it's not an agenda item, but I'll, I'm gonna share some funding ideas after.
Okay.
Um, so I just wanted to put for a future agenda, um, when it's, when it's, uh, I don't know, when it's, I'd like to, I'd like for the administration to look at the irreplaceables, uh, report from T N T P, see if there's any lessons that we can learn for Creighton. Uh, I know in particular, we are developing a new evaluation system which will help us identify irreplaceables. Um, but I think any, any sort of suggestions or ideas on this issue, which we've identified as like one of our biggest challenges, uh, would be helpful.
When I was over there yesterday at Excalibur, they were talking about Kinder Ready. Could we have a presentation on that because I didn't even know about it. I was just wondering if we could come in and talk about Kinder Ready because I think that's a great program.
Sure.
I know we don't have a teacher right now, but I could learn more about it.
Okay. Any other future agenda items? Okay. Thank you all for your participation today.
Yay.
Meeting adjourned.
That is awesome. People are shaking their hands.
Oh, that, I hate to say that. It's like, you know, it's not a curriculum.